Hi.
Ready to go? All right, thank you. We'll call to order tonight the North Bend City Council Meeting for September 15, 2020 by virtual meeting as we have been doing lately. I'll ask the clerk to confirm the role.
All council members present, your honor.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to the consent agenda, we do again have a change I'm going to request on the agenda. We have two items, seven and eight, both related to City Hall and Skyward Construction that unfortunately we thought would be ready tonight and are not, so I'm asking those to be removed. And we also would like to move item number nine related to an amendment to the vehicle, excuse me, to the Personnel Annual related to take on vehicle policy to the consent agenda. And we want to add one item back which would then become item number seven, which is a special report from Eastside Fire and Rescue. We were able to get the chief here related to the health alerts we've received recently. And so, Mr. Protown, could I get a motion to that effect, please?
Yes, your honor, thank you. I'd move to amend tonight's agenda by removing item seven, AB 20-124, motion authorizing CEO number five with Skyward, and item eight, AB 20-125, resolution accepting City Hall project from the night's agenda. And also move, now I need to flip over here, also move item number nine, AB 20-126, resolution amending personnel policy regarding vehicle take home to the consent agenda, and add a new agenda item number seven, a presentation by Eastside Fire and Rescue related to wildfires prior to public comment.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Elwood, second by Mr. Garcia. And just to reiterate, because I think we need to have one correction there, we are moving to remove current agenda item seven related to change our number five to Skyward, and current agenda item number eight related to City Hall project as complete, both of those from the agenda. We are moving current item number nine, resolution amending personnel policy to the consent agenda. It will become item number seven. And we are adding what will now be new agenda item number nine, a special report by Eastside Fire and Rescue by Chief Clark. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are they opposed?
Aye.
I have a motion carries with the exception of Mr. God Health.
No, I wasn't, I just had unmuted myself. So it's you now.
I'm sorry. You were voting yes, so the motion issued unanimous. Thank you very much. The delay made me think you were wrong. All right, thank you very much. I do apologize if you see me glancing to the side. My monitor related to, the camera is not working tonight, so I'm looking to the side to see folks. All right, now I will call for a motion to approve the revised consent agenda. Motion to that effect.
I'd like to make a motion.
I moved to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a motion by Mr. Garcia, second by Mr. Elwood. All in favor?
Aye.
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 God Health?
Aye.
Thank you.
Come on, Alon.
All right. That's everyone in. Motion carries, it is unanimous. We reached out to the next on the agenda then now is going to be a presentation by Chief Clark. Want to know, this is related to, of course, we've been dealing with the smoke in the community here of late and health issues related to that. And this is all due to fires, of course, remote as far away as California, nothing currently in the community, thank goodness. But also related to the health and the safety around us, we, Chief wanted to make sure that he was getting accurate information related to best practices around fire prevention. Chief Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time to talk about wildland preparation with you. Can you hear me okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I just want to take a couple of minutes to go over what Eastside Fire and Rescue's program, which is a national, we're part of a national program for Firewise, which has to do with preparing your home and your property for potential wildland fire threats. So far this season, especially over the last month, your Eastside Fire and Rescue crews have been down to California. We're currently in Oregon. We're in eastern Washington. The closest that we're on a fire to right now, we have a unit in, just outside of Enham Claw. And last week, when the South King County was hit especially hard with the power lines down, causing hundreds of small wildfires, we had units down there, including on the, the one in Pierce County that caused some evacuations near Bonnie Lake. This is a very real threat wildfire is in our area and in our state. And obviously, the smoke is reminding us of that. As far as the health of the smoke goes, the best advice I can get is stay inside where there's an air conditioner. And when this clears out, which we're expecting, the latest update I read today was that it will clear out this weekend, make sure you change your air conditioning filters in your home, if in fact you do have that, to make sure that you get as clean air as possible coming in. So with that, is, first of all, speaking about North Bend in general, when it comes to the, what we call the wooie area, the wildland urban interface, there are parts of North Bend that are in fact in what is considered the wooie. This is where you would have homes or structures that are in the urban interface, meaning up in the woods, up in areas that are pretty densely covered with burning materials or materials that can burn from, from the forest. Many parts of North Bend are also not in the wooie, meaning down on the, more down on the valley floor, where it's a little bit more wide open. In fact, the City Hall area and the immediate adjacent neighborhoods, most of that is not in what is considered the wooie area. That doesn't mean that you can't have some kind of brush fire there down on the floor, doesn't mean you can't have more than one structure catch on fire at a time. But it does mean that you're not in the main interface, which although these, these principles I'm going to go over with in a minute are for the wooie interface areas, we can all practice this whether we live in the wooie area or not. And the last note before I go over my bullets is, just last week, we did have a fire that started in Sumamish, you know, on a deck, on the side deck of a house. It extended into that house and then crossed over some trees and extended into a second house. And both houses were near total losses. Thanks again, because it was a dry day, the humidity was low, and it was a fast-moving fire. So these are fires that can affect our areas. And what we do to prep our property and what our house is constructed of is the most important impact we can have on the fuels and preventing these fires from spreading. So I'm going to be looking down a couple of times. I've made sure to have the most up-to-date material on some of the things I'm going to brief you on, and I'm reading from a few toolkits. But first of all, when it comes to Firewise, this is a National Fire Protection Association standard. Firewise is a national program that's adopted throughout the country. And I'm going to be talking about home, safety zones or ignition zones around your home, mainly from this document. The Washington DNR, State of Washington, also has their version of it, which is adapted from this document. And then EFER also has an adopted Firewise program, again, adopted from this document. So first of all, let's talk about the homes that you have in North Bend and the homes in your area. The home itself, what it's constructed of, will determine in part how fast a fire will spread to it or through it. So wood siding that isn't painted or are well-maintained, shake-shingled roof is about the worst roofing material you can have of any kind as far as for fire spread. And if you were to, if there was an evacuation or there was some kind of wildfire threat and you leave your windows open, doors open, or vents open of any kind, you are leaving a direct pathway for a fire or an ember to go into the house and start the house on fire from the inside out. And you see these large fires, like took out the small city in eastern Washington last week, or the fires we most prevalently see on the news in California when homes are devastated. When we respond on these wildfires, more often than not, these fires are starting from the inside out because embers get into the house, start the house going, and, and then extend to the exterior of the house. That, this is a very real issue, and you have full control over sealing up your house during wildfire season and ensuring that you can prevent the embers from coming inside. What's your, what's your house is constructed of is another key point. If you do have a shake-shingle roof, please make plans, figure out a way how to afford to transition that to a different style roof that is not as combustible. And then if you are in an area that you're most concerned and you have the means, one of the most effective things you can do is to put an outdoor fire sprinkler system on around the eaves. This is, this is a validated way to help prevent fire spread. And when you see homes on the news where everything around it has burned and one house is standing, oftentimes they have an outdoor sprinkler. But then, more often than not, what they've done is adhere to these principles that I'm going to go over with now. First and foremost, the first five feet of your house, absolutely nothing combustible or growing from your foundation out for five feet. That means no grass, no small plants, ideally some kind of gravel, some non-combustible material, definitely not mulch. And although we do have a lot of mulch around here, but that first five feet is the, is a five feet where you want absolutely no vegetation at all touching your house. That includes all the way up through the chimney line. The next zone is five to 30 feet. This would be an area where you are going to, of course, have some vegetation, but the more hardscaping you do, the safer your house will be. If you do have grass, this is where you maintain it and you keep it cut as low as possible. Do not allow grass or ground coverings to grow up next to trees, bushes. What, what occurs when you allow that to happen is what's called ladder-ing of fuels. When a fire starts low, if it has fuels to ladder and continue to climb up, that's how we get treetop fires going. If you trim your trees up about 15 feet, you don't have any bushes at the base of the tree, and you don't have any grass or ground coverings that go up to the base of the tree or the bushes that touch the tree, that keeps the fuels from ladder-ing, which allows the fire to stay on the ground where it's easier for us to manage. And then 30 to 100 feet or your property line, whatever comes first, this is where you really want to have, this is the space that's first going to get impacted by a wildfire that's coming in your direction. And the more drought-tolerant, non-combustible planting materials that you can put in this area, the better it is for the safety of your house. So I oftentimes come in contact with homeowners who love grass and have a lot of grass. And while grass is a great-looking ground cover, if left unkept especially, and if allowed to come right up to the base of your house and all the ladder-ing fuels, it can be quite combustible and not the best ground covering if your primary concern is wildfire. Same with the plants and the rich trees and vegetation that we have in many areas here in the North Bend area. If you're going to have these, keeping them trimmed and maintained and away from the house is vitally important, and keeping them trimmed to the proper height. Again, all of these things are in the control of the homeowner. This is something we all have the ability to go out and do and, and keep things safe for you and your neighbors. Like the house I just described, the double house fire in Sumamish, the tree that was in between the neighbors, I'm sure they enjoyed that tree for years and years. But when you look at a property line and you see a tree that bridges two houses and touches both the roofs of both houses, think about it when a fire burns, how are we going to, how are you going to keep that from spreading? And trust me, a hose line from your garden hose is not going to keep a wildfire from spreading. And I think the last note that I will leave you with is, is the intensity of fires. I know we've all watched fires or seen fires on TV, and there are different types of fires out there. And of course, if, when you see a structure fire, maybe the news is covering a commercial fire or a house fire that occurred in a neighborhood, there's some intensity to that, to that fire. And interior especially, there's incredible heat. If you saw any of the footage, and if not, this is something I can certainly make available, and I can, I can find some samples to send to the council. But if you have not seen wildfire footage up close and personal, how intensely a fire burns when burning right up next to a house. And, and I've got some footage from one of our former deputy chiefs of the Bonnie Lake fire last week. Imagine flames that are close to 100 feet high. You cannot hear yourself think when you're within even 100 feet of this fire. And the fire can move and will move faster than any one of us can run. It is a highly intense thing. And I have been on many fires where somebody with a garden hose is, is spraying down, trying to put a fire out. And we come in with our larger hoses, and our larger hoses will not even put the fire out. The amount of BTUs or British Thermal Units coming from a fire, moving this intensely in the wildland is unlike what most humans have seen, and it is not as simple as watering. Moisture is not something that helps it. Humidity helps keep fires from spreading. And I, when I say humidity, I mean, on the, on the grand scale of the overall weather, what the humidity is in the atmosphere, not what the humidity is standing around us. Wildfires are an incredible force of nature, and we do not put wildfires out. We surround them and remove debris and fuels in order to put a wildfire out. Firefighters do not just attack a wildfire with hose lines. Once they get moving, we can't put them out. All we can do is contain them. And we contain them with these very principles that we're talking about, removing the fuels from around your house. That is the strategy that works for these large-scale fires. And unfortunately, that's the best tool that we have for fighting these fires. So with that, I appreciate all the time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Guys, folks, this is Jean Buckner in Wood River.
Jean, Jean, we've not called any public comment. You're out of order, please.
Okay, this is about the wooie.
No, sorry, please.
So there's, what is this public?
Jean, please mute Jean. Jean, if you cannot stay muted during non-public comment, I'll have to have you removed from the meeting. Thank you. Does any council member have a question for the chief? Ms. Colm?
Hey, Chief Clark. So I live in Wood River, and we live on large pieces of acreage. And even though I have not a lot of debris near my house, probably 30 to 50 out, it's a bunch of salal and blackberry bushes and just natural woods. We considered part of the wooie, and what does that mean for us?
So first of all, I'd have to, excuse me, I'd have to look at a map and see your property in conjunction with the wooie interface to tell you if that is. But I, in general, I can picture what you're describing, because that is very prevalent in this area of King County. Proper forest management from a wildfire prevention standpoint would involve the 30 feet that it sounds like that you have is the proper buffer that you want between your house and the next wave or ladder of fuels. Now, in that next 70 feet around your house is, of course, most of the large trees are going to stay intact. But from a very technical standpoint, what you want to do is then clear all of the ground cover in between the trees. Those blackberry bushes, which are nasty, I know they're very difficult, but when they dry out, they're going to be a heck of a fuel in it in a dry year. And that blackberry and all the associated bushes there are considered the ladder-ing fuels that I was referring to. If a fire was to, if you are in the wooie and a fire was to come into our area, just imagine, it's not necessarily the direct fire line that will start a fire going or sustain a fire through a neighborhood. What it is, is the embers that are getting thrown a quarter, half, even a mile ahead of the fire. And as that, if an ember were to come down in that dense area that you were talking about, chances are, I'm going to guess, you or anyone else couldn't get to that ember. And once it starts going, the wind is blowing, the humidity's low, and then you're going to have a bigger issue. So the best thing to do is to clear that out to 100 feet. I'm sure that's a huge task based on what you described, but that would be the best advice I could give without looking directly at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Longback?
Thanks. Chief, how's Bud Backer doing?
Bud has had better days. I think things are getting a little better. But yeah, he, he was having, there was some rumors going, well, you asked, so I'm answering you. There were some rumors going that an arsonist started that fire and really took, took hold on social media, and that's absolutely not the case. So that got Bud pretty worked up, even on social media. He was posting pretty defiantly that this was a naturally caused fire. So but anyway, he's doing all right now. Thanks.
Good, thanks.
The other council member, Mr. Garcia. On mute?
Spacebar didn't work. Chief, I just wanted, I guess my, my question, I have a question, just a comment. I appreciate that our, our guys and girls are out helping other communities. I have friends and family in Bonnie Lake, and I know that there, it was pretty, Bonnie Lake and summer, and it was pretty dicey there and whatnot. And to know our guys were down there, and I know also some former Eastside Fire and Rescue captains that got called in to help out that were retired and down in the area. So I know you guys have put a lot of resources out to help our neighbors and even our distant neighbors of California. And I'm sure you guys know some people in Oregon. So I just, I just appreciate the cooperative spirit that Eastside Fire and Rescue brings to, to our friends and neighbors. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chief, thank you very much for that information. Very informative, and I appreciate you making the time. I know that beyond just long days, you other, you also have responsibilities with other jurisdictions. So we, we thank you for making the time to be with us tonight. Glad we could accommodate it.
All right, you're very welcome. And if you ever need me back, please, you know where to get me. We'll talk to you again soon.
We will.
Excuse me, but this is Jean Buckner, and I have a question for the chief.
Jean, let me, let me, let me speak to all public on this call. This is no different than any in-person council meeting. Your interruption would, is the effect of walking up to the microphone during council business. It is not acceptable. And if that continues, we would have to remove you from the meeting, just as I would have the sergeant-at-arms escort a disruptive member out. We do have public comment time. You are welcome to ask questions, make statements during that time when called on. This is not a presentation or feedback from the public. I appreciate your, your concern, but this is not that time. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Okay. Before we move on, I did have one other thing I wanted to share with council and, and for the public. As most of you, I'm sure, are aware, certainly all council members, Salal Water Association did post information that they were going to comply with the recent ordinance related to supplying data so that we could properly bill our sewer customers. I'm pleased to announce that they did provide that information today. In our continuing conversations with them, we're, we're glad that we were able to work this out and are moving forward and hoping to continue to dialogue with Salal on better relations. And I wanted to share that with you. While, while it's been a disruptive couple of months, and the finance department has some, a lot of additional work to do, to do to get us back on track, we're very pleased that we'll be able to continue on as we have for well over a decade, ensuring that sewer customers are billed for their usage. And I'm not going to say anymore than that, because I don't know the completeness of the data to ensure that we got it for the time period that it was originally missing, to make sure we can, over, over the course of the coming billing periods, make sure we have all the corrections. But we'll certainly be working to do that. So I wanted all of council to be aware of that. Chief, if you're there and able to stay through the public comment, we would appreciate it. There may be some questions, of course, sounds like Ms. Buckner has one. If you could stay through the public comment while that to happen. If you're not able to, we do understand that you're pressed for time. Appreciate that. And with that, we will move to citizen comments. Don, who's first?
Jean Buckner, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yes, Jean Buckner, 46226, Southeast 139th Place. And Chief Clark, I will call you tomorrow or send you some information tomorrow about our situation here in my neighborhood, Wood River, which is on the east side of North Bend and heavily tree. But I would like to speak to other issues related to what's going on between Salal and the city. My understanding is that the mayor communicated that the city does not need summer usage data from Salal members. And that if that is indeed the case, then, you know, there might not be a real issue here. The city, the, Salal has, under protest, released information, but under protest. And my guess is that may or may not continue. And Salal members are very concerned about the city having access to our private water association information. We're a privately owned water association. And though I personally don't mind Salal providing you with my winter usage so that you can determine what sewer rate should be, as Bellevue does, as Issaquah does, they look at the winter rates so that it doesn't get conflated with the summer watering, et cetera. And I understand that the mayor agrees with that. So if the mayor agrees with that, then, then Salal can provide winter usage data, and all is good. So I guess my question is for you, Mr. Mayor, and the, and the council to consider is, if you agree with that, then I don't think we have a problem here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Anyone else?
Yes, Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
So Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Thank you, chief, for the really excellent introduction and on fire safety and wooie safety. I, I don't have many disagreements with, you know, removing combustible materials and many of the recommendations. In fact, I live in a neighborhood that has three sheet or shake roofs. One of the things that I, that I found, though, in talking to county experts, Matthew Axe, who's with the King County Conservation District, and also educating myself on the wooie, there's two types of wooie. There's the interface, where homes are in heavily tree neighborhoods like Wood River, where maybe there's 50% cover. But there's also the intermix, which are homes with less cover but are within 2.4 kilometers of heavily forested areas. And the concern is things like embers burning, blowing over. Certainly, that would replace tremendous amounts of North Bend within the intermix zone. And I'm very concerned about that, because many of our properties are heavily landscaped, beautiful. We have trees, we have grasses, we have shrubs. And we need to maintain those things. And one of the things that concerns me about Firewise, but it's in the W, in the Washington DNR, is a recommendation to keep landscape watered and green and lush if you have it. And this is a big concern considering the recent water restrictions that the North Bend City Council enacted in an effort really to save its lack of adding mitigation water and its overdevelopment. You know, if we're prohibited from watering in its quantity, some of us have large properties. We're on half acres, three quarters, Wood River, La Forest, others where, you know, if we can't water, we feel our homes, our grasses are at risk. And this is a big problem for us. I also found one other thing. The county's map on wooie is dated to 2004. It doesn't even include the annexation of North Bend, the areas where Jean lives, the gateway to the Middle Fork. We're in so much proximity to dense forests, I'm very concerned that if something breaks out near us and we can't water, we'll have grass fires and landscaping fires everywhere within the city for what the city has done in its water conservation ordinance. And also has applied to the Salal organization, which has no restriction. It does not need to mitigate, it does not have a water shortage, and it confirms rapidly, unlike the city, when I asked for any restrictions on watering. The city took more than a day to respond and clarify its water restrictions ordinance. I'm very concerned about the negative effects of the city's water conservation and restrictions ordinance on fire safety, not only for the city but for the county. Wildfire respects no boundaries. It doesn't respect city and North Bend boundaries. It can lead.
Please wrap up, Mr. Thomas.
And King County can lead forward. So I really am very concerned with what's happening here in the water conservation ordinance, and that we have enough water to approach, water enough for our larger properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else, Don?
No, unless there's anybody on the phone who wishes to speak, and then they would need to hit star. No, unless there's anybody on the phone who wishes to speak and then they would need to hit star nine.
Okay, getting done. We will move on to commission and committee reports. First, tonight, since we have the chief here, I'm going to reverse the order and call on council members, God Health, for Eastside Fire and Rescue Board report. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yeah, little, little issue there, muting. Well, thank you. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting met September 10th, 2020. It was a virtual meeting, just like ours. During the briefing, we, we had a fire, most of it was a fire chief briefing. We did have some things on the consent agenda. We did not have a fact meeting. But the chief talked about the PFAS and we've got a new person representing District 10 on the executive board for that. And that will be Alan Martin. He also talked about the state's approach, approached us to spend additional funds of a scope of work for, that was submitted for review. The state submitted a 700K funding request for the next two years. If the funds are approved, the consultant will attend our next boarding meetings and we'll discuss options on how to use that. We did get an update on COVID. They responded on 16 calls this past weekend and we have two employees that are quarantined currently. And we discussed what protocols are in place and what things in the future might need to be in place as we move forward. We also discussed a political endorsement correction. At one point, a couple of candidates actually used Eastside Fire and Rescue's logo. As a board, we do not make endorsements. It was actually being endorsed by the union and they have since ceased in using the logo. We have, we're currently working on property testing was completed for a possible new site or temporary site for Station 71. Unfortunately, that didn't work out. There was a King County request to discuss banning fireworks within all of King County. We discussed the same things Jeff talked about, the wildland, inter, wildland deployments that we have out there. And then discussed where we'll move on next as we try to continue to move towards updating our governance and towards a nonprofit formation. And we'll further discuss these things at our fact meeting coming forward. And that is it. Do you want me to go into the finance administration?
Why don't you move on to finance? Please, thank you.
Okay, so finance administration met again, virtual, September 1st. We discussed the Ulid Lean For Closure Authorization. We discussed our prosecutor contract. Surprised to say, it did go up. I know you guys were considering it would go down. We discussed an item that was on consent agenda tonight, the take home vehicle policy. We talked about leasehold excise tax. We got a confirmation of our new CED director and that was it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lowdenback, CED.
Thank you, your honor. We met today at 3:00 PM and we discussed the Rural Transportation Coalition in the Suqualmie Valley. We also discussed amendments to North Bend Municipal Code 18.16, parking amendments and made a recommendation. Other than that, we, we were complete.
Thank you. Let's see here. Mr. Garcia, Public Health and Safety.
Yes, we met last Tuesday at 4:00 PM. And through the Teams app, we discussed some of the updates from Eastside Fire and Rescue. Kind of a little bit similar, but not as detailed as tonight. And then we discussed the installation of a glass barrier at the Public Works Permit Counter. And that was it this month.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Elwood, Pro Town. Are you muted? See you there. Are you unmuted?
Can you hear me now?
Now, we got you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I forget from my phone, you have to hit that star six. So it's bizarre. Sorry. So we have a council work study coming next week, September 22nd. We're in the process of working out an agenda for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miller, Commission Reports.
Do you want the Transportation Public Works?
Did I miss one?
You did, sir.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Rosen, I warned you, I guess. Yeah, please, Mr. Rosen. TBW.
I got nothing. No. We met on August 25th, at four o'clock via Zoom or Team or whatever it was. Anyway, had several items on our agenda. We talked about the PSC's proposal for a gas training facility near Nintendo. We also talked about a resolution. A lot, most of this has already been passed, but I'll go over it quickly. Resolution to authorize developer extension agreement with Cadview Townhomes, resolution authorized developer extension agreement with Canaan Plant. Resolution to off, to approve of water use efficiency goals. I believe that was passed last time. Motion to approve a professional service contract with RH2. Also motion to extend professional service contract with Partite. 2020 pavement repair and overlay project closeout. Motion to approve a change order number five with ACI for Park Street Roundabout. And discussion on the 2020 pavement condition in that, sounds like a cat somewhere.
Yeah, we're getting a little bit of feedback.
And that is all, your honor.
Okay. We'll assume that it was you, Mr. Rosen. It was, you know, scrambling a little bit of the words there. Uh, Mr. Miller, you're up. Ah, you, you're the cat, Mr. Miller. Unplug.
You're blaming me.
He sometimes has to unplug and replug where.
I think Mr. Miller needs to quit inhaling helium before making his presentation.
You're muted or something. We're not hearing you.
Most of the time that makes you happy.
There you go. Now we hear you, don't have to see. Okay. No, no, can't hear you again.
I really feel sorry for the poor man.
Move on. Let's go.
Yep. Okay, we're good. We're just going to skip your reports tonight. Sorry. Yep, it's just not working for you. We, we, I do know that the Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission, I believe the Economic Development Commission did not meet this past month. Planning Commission and Parks did. That's about all I would be able to say to it. So moving on from there, I think we are ready actually for your council and administrator concerns and initiatives. We may again not have anything from Mr. Miller from the administration. I might call on Mr. Regos to back him up. But first, let's see, Mr. God Health.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, you know, I, I just want to make a point. I'm beginning to see an awful lot of negativity through our social media. And I understand that people might not agree with some things we do. But there's really no reason to get negative about it or attack people or accuse people of different things. The other thing I want to make a point here, folks, if you want to have an issue with, you know, certain things specifically with, you know, what's safe and what's not, listen to the experts. The reason why we have people like Jeff Clark onboard and come is to help you guys out. The water conservation ordinance, guys, it's done. It's law. It's not going to affect whether you can water your lawn or keep your house safe from fires. Okay? Pete, so again, my comment for most people, please listen to our experts, not me, not to social media. People on social media have an agenda and it's not nor normally necessarily the right agenda that's going to keep you safe. So if you've got questions about safety of your property, please do contact and talk with our fire experts. And again, like I said, the numbers that we put out for the wants or water conservation ordinance were based upon years and years of watering your lawn and keeping your water up to date. So if you've been doing the same thing from summer to summer, it won't affect you. So thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. God Health, uh, let's see here. Mr. Lowdenback.
Thank you, your honor. Appreciate Chief Clark coming and giving us that update. That was very informative and I think we can all heed his advice. Take a look at our properties and, and do what you can to maintain a fire safe environment whenever possible. And I just wanted to say, because we have a holiday coming up on Friday, a happy Rosh Hashanah to our friends who celebrate that. And that's about it, your honor.
Thank you very much. Oh, let's see here. Mr. Garcia. You're muted. Got that mute thing going on. I see. Okay, moving on from you. Mr. Rosen, would you like to do the same?
No, I will actually speak. Um, we didn't have an opportunity to meet on 9/11, but I never want to let that event go unrecognized. You always say, you know, never forget. And I want to call out and thank our first responders who not only on that day, but every day since, sacrificed and risked their lives to protect us. And I don't ever want to forget that either. So just wanted to make that statement tonight and that is all, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, your honor. I'll keep it short and sweet. I have nothing further to add to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, everybody, ready? Mr. Mr. Miller, we're going to give you one shot.
Well, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Go.
Okay. Well, you want to hear about the planning commission then, don't you? I know you do. I know you're all just jumping at the bit on this one. Okay, they met on September 10th and they deliberated on the development agreement for the marijuana retail store by applicant Wayne Semenoff. Haven't made a recommendation yet. They are going to finish the SEPA determination first and they will meet on September 24th. And we expect them to provide a recommendation on the marijuana store and the development agreement, which will then be coming to the city council. At the September 24th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission will also be deliberating a draft development agreement with Fugitive Western for a light industrial development on the Mario property north of Nintendo. The development agreement would allow Fugitive Western to utilize a septic system for the development subject to participating in a utility local improvement district to bring municipal sewer service to the area. Parks Commission met on August 26th and voted to appoint Deborah Landers as an ex-officio arts advisory member to the Parks Commission. They discussed conceptual, conceptual ideas for a mural or landscape painting on the new clarifier tank at the wastewater treatment plant. And discussed ideas for ways to celebrate North Bend's Arbor Day this fall, given COVID. First commission will meet next on October 28th. And on a related note, the mayor and staff will be interviewing two candidates for the currently vacated youth commissioner position on the Parks Commission this week. The Economic Development Commission is going to be meeting to, and they did meet last month. And they did consider six different economic development plans that we have collected. And the whole concept of putting together an economic development plan, that is one of the items that will be on your work study. And we plan to bring to you some examples and we think it's an important document, given our limited availability of many of the infrastructure services that we need to continue economic development. So we'll be bringing that to you. And your EDC is very engaged in that process. Thank you.
Okay. Any other department reports? Mr. Miller, any, anything on departments, internal activity that you need to?
Well, no, none, none, none other than to, to welcome Jesse as our new economic development manager. He has been staffing the EDC along with Bree. We expect great things from him. He's doing some good things and you'll see some of that at your 22nd meeting. And we've been working very carefully, both the mayor and I, with our new public information officer. And if you'll notice, the articles that are coming out, we have some very good articles on a myriad of issues. And we can look forward to continuing excellent information coming out of City Hall due then. And I thank her for her contribution.
You're here. Thank you very much. Okay, on my list for this evening, first off, I'm going to back up a little bit. I do not watch chat notes during the meeting. And so I'm going to say, Ms. Buckner, I do apologize for having to be abrupt with you. I do understand that you joined the meeting late and thought you had missed public comment. So I do apologize for needing to be abrupt. But I thank you for realizing that and stepping back. Appreciate that. The city will be hosting a yard waste recycling event this Saturday, September 19th, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Public Workshop. More information about that event is available on the community calendar on the city's website. I'm very pleased to announce and hopefully you have seen that construction on the Tanner Trail Connection Project is currently underway along North Bendway between the Cedar Falls Roundabout, heading east to Maloney Grove Avenue. This new paved pathway segment is made possible with funding from Sideview Parks 2018 voter approved capital bond and is expected to be completed by the end of October. Really exciting segment to get, it's help connect to the new city hall. I also encourage all of you to check out the recently published articles on the news section of the website about how to save water. This goes along with Mr. Miller's comments. The article's features quite a few tips on how you can conserve water to help lower your monthly water bill and help the environment. Also featured in the article is more information for citizens about the recently passed water conservation ordinance, including quite a bit of FAQs related to accurate information on what is and is not being regulated within there. Some very good information. So I would encourage all of the public to take a look at that. And with that, I think we are, Ms. Colin.
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, you forgot me. And Mary, your newest member is on the good of the order.
Yeah, I did indeed. Thank you very much.
I have two. The first one is, as for Salal, they don't have a water conservation ordinance. And as a Salal member, I believe they should have one and I'm going to encourage them as a member to do so. The second thing is, my thoughts are with all the people losing their homes to wildfires throughout the West and to the frontline fire crews. And I hope everybody can stay safe and I thank all their efforts and I feel for the people in danger.
Thank you. And thank you for calling my attention to my oversight. Appreciate that. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you again for joining us tonight and for the information you let us know and we can forward that to the community as well. Thank you for all the efforts that everybody is doing out there during this extremely difficult, I would have to say outrageous time that we're all living in on the West Coast. Now the smoke is pushing, pushing east and affecting a lot of people out across the nation. So it's a challenging and difficult time, as we all know, but my heart goes out to all, similar to what our, our council member Heather said, all that are affected and loved ones across the nation. So everybody, I'll always say this, please stay safe, stay careful and kind to each other as much as you possibly can. And we'll get through this.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. While you've still got the floor, if we have no other business, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. God Health to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and is unanimous and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Motion carries. It is unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.